We'll turn it over to you for your presentation on the budget.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for joining us. I have a brief presentation on the fiscal year 2016 town budget. So a little bit about the budget process. The budget process starts first with the departments preparing budget plans that they ultimately will submit to my office, which I then begin a review process with each individual department to go over what their needs are.
Yes.
Once that's completed, I can put all the numbers together and submit the proposed budget according to the charter to the council. This year, that was on March 16th. Once it's in the hands of the council, they then have a number of meetings with the different departments to go over what their proposal is. And they hear not just what I had put into the budget, but also the other needs we're now funded as part of the budget. Once that is complete, we go into a public hearing on the town manager's budget. That's coming up, and I'll have the calendar to get into that in a second. And then following the public hearing, council goes right into deliberations. It's actually the next day after the public hearing on the budget that council begins talking about what the final budget will look like. And then they adopt the budget, it goes into effect July 1st, 2015. And so this is kind of the calendar of all those different events. See, we start way back in November with the departments, and May 16th, the budget's submitted to council for their review. Today, April 23rd, is our community conversation, so a little bit later this year than normal. Next week on the 29th, which is a Wednesday, at JFK, we have a public hearing that'll be held in the auditorium. And then May starts, actually, April starts the council deliberations on the budget. And then by May 18th this year, council has to have the budget adopted. If they fail to adopt the budget, the budget I'm discussing tonight actually goes into effect. Then, of course, July 1st starts our new fiscal year. So there are, there's always different influences on the budget that tells us some of the steps we have to make to create a balanced budget. By charter and by the state, we have to care to pass the budget that revenues and expenditures balance. This year, we have some spiking going on in a number of different areas. Employee health insurance benefits are scheduled, are projected to go up by 15 percent unfortunately this year, which is in, I think, the five-plus years that we have been self-funded, this is the largest increase that we've seen. Generally, it's under the 10 percent, generally around the 5 or 1s. If you attended any of our meetings last year for the budget, I talked about we're getting ready to see some of the highest debt payments over the next two or three years. And so this starts the spiking of that. In total, we're looking about 1.1, almost 1.2 million dollars in additional costs for higher debt that we've been going into since way back when. I think actually next year is when that spikes at the highest end. Although with the high school project, with the roads project that was passed, we're going to see that another spike coming up about three to four years out. And then we did increase the amount of money going into the capital improvement fund. This is due to a lot of the capital needs, whether it's roads, the equipment that we need, the vehicles, and some capital projects I've talked about here a little bit. Also pension increases. The actuarial people changed the calculations to make it more in line, more realistic and accurate for us to budget properly. But in doing that, quickly increased what our contributions on a annual basis is. And that spikes up by $462,000 this year. Last few things on this slide here. Snow school, we're bringing that back online for a number of years. That has been actually corrected by crack for their high school until their new building opened up earlier this, this school year. And so we are turning it in partnership with the board of education into the early childhood learning center. But doing that, that effectively becomes a full functioning school. So we're retaining the utilities as well as the service staff and the cost to keep that open.
Try casting this one down.
But then on the positive side, we have actually registered a little bit larger increase of the brand list. That's 29 percent last year, about 22 percent. But on the positive side, that generates about 700,000 or so extra dollars that helps relieve some of the need to increase.
Yeah, keeping a man out every once in a while. You just tap that, and that'll focus rate.
We have to levy across the rest of the residents and businesses. So I always like to talk about where revenues come from. And Town of Enfield gets a fairly large portion of our op-ay for the general fund from intergovernmental sources.
Because we never reset the time code.
State of Connecticut.
Okay.
And so unfortunately, if the state of Connecticut has designed on reducing what our allotment is, it does have a major impact. And for the last, I'd say, five years, there's always been this point in the year, the threat that they're going to be reducing our allotment. And that equates to around 34 million dollars and about 33.6 dollars and cents. But again, we're hearing that that is a possibility that we should be prepared for. So, you know, what council ultimately adopts could be adjusted dramatically if they decide to cut off any of the funding that they're currently giving us. Unfortunately, they got their budget after ours, so we don't know. But hopefully, it won't happen this year. The majority of our revenues comes from taxes. We lobby on houses, farms, businesses, personal property, as well as vehicles. This year, the mill, which everybody always wants to know, what did one mill equal to? This year, one mill is equal to 2,826,190 dollars. In total, we're estimating revenues of a little over 125 million dollars. And how does that get spent? Well, it gets spent two different ways. One, what we call the tax side, and the other is the board of education allotment. And this year, the town's allotment's going to be upwards of 59 million dollars, where the board of education allotment's going up to 65 million, eight hundred to change.
Yep.
So now just focusing on the town side budget, which is from here on out we're talking about. The general fund expenditures broke down into a number of different ways. The largest single department that we have that expends money is Public Works. And if you had seen the presentation that the PPW director given to the town council, you see, I think the number was this year upwards of 40 million dollars, I believe?
49.
49 million dollars is the actual expenditure when you look at all the different capital projects that are happening at the same time as what the general operation fund is going for. And generally, there, out of the general fund, that's about a 17 million dollar operation. And then the next highest is public safety, so that's police, that's dispatchers, that's school security, emergency management. And then again, you see it broke down with transfers, where we're sending money out to the social services fund, EMS fund, recreation fund, as well as IT and capital. And general government, generally takes in town manager, council, finance, those type of expenditures. I'm hearing voices, I don't know why. The, but the general fund is not the only fund that the town has. We also have, as I said earlier, EMS, social services, IT, and recreation. And this graph here kind of shows what the current year budget expenditures are versus the proposed. And the smaller, right here, the smaller column represents what the general fund commitment is as percentage or as a dollar value of the total expenditure. And EMS has a little bit of a decrease. I did receive a comment or question from a resident about, you know, how is that decrease going to impact EMS? Well, the answer is it's not going to impact EMS because WOKE took out that, primarily the big drop in that was how we paid for the ambulances. And we took it out of that operational account and moved it over to the CIP for the vehicle replacement plan. So that's really what that decrease is. Social services, this year, we have a fairly significant increase, but that's part of one of our initiatives that we're doing this year that primarily is focusing on hiring four social workers as well as a part-time educator, trying to address some of the needs within the community that we're seeing a lot of, a lot of areas that with this additional staffing will help improve the overall community. And working into the schools as well in providing additional social services there. Information technology, again, shows a little bit of an increase. Primarily, that increase is coming from capital purchases that will happen as part of the school side budget. But it shows up as we put all those costs within one fund for information technology. And recreation, for the most part, is about the same level as it was last year. Starting actually in this year, we are fully self-funded within the sewer. Sewer, right here, is WPCA water pollution control authority. And even though if you go to WPCA authority meeting, you see the same 11 people that you see as town council, that's just how it works out. Here in Enfield, the council doubles their duty as the water pollution control authority. But starting with the current fiscal year, 100 percent of the funding comes from the users of the sewer system. And so looking at it, the budget this year compared to last year shows a decrease. It's not really a decrease from the operational side because in the current year, we have, I would say, a little over $600,000 in capital that's coming from the state who is funding a couple of our planning functions we have to do for the upcoming project, which is the total upgrade of our facilities at water pollution control. The good thing is, I guess, long-term, that the funding for the upgrades is already in place. So we're not anticipating the need to come back to residents and ask for more money within the WPCA. It's self-funded, based where all the things we're looking for. There's also repaying the general fund load that because the operations through this year were not fine, we had to take money from the general fund to balance it out. But how the user fee is set up allows us to pay that over 20 to 25. 2016 capital improvement program, we're allotting 3.3 million dollars for capital needs. Some of the things that are going to be done, they talked about a vehicle replacement plan, 1.6 million for that, upgrades to school facilities and security, parking lot construction, village center repainting, roads, 2015 commitment, town-owned facility repairs and improvements, place name replacements, and the purchase of various public works. So very big schedule of things to be happening for the next year if this gets approved. Then some of the things that the fiscal year 2016 budget does, again, just talking about the town side, it requests the addition of a second electrician for building the grounds, which will give us the ability to bring in-house the repair and maintenance of all the streetlights, as well as allow us to catch up on some of our electrical work that we've been putting off across facilities. Again, we're talking about the anti-services related to creating healthy families and safe vibrant communities initiative that the social services director has unveiled, which equates to a part-time parent educator and four social workers impact on the budget. Parking lot constructions for the Angelo Ramania Activity Center, as well as for the Hattieville Institute. As I said earlier, the painting of the Thompsonville Village Center and funding of the vehicles on the replacement schedule for this year. And all this is done with an increase, needed an increase, in the mill rate. And this chart can give you that historical perspective going way back to year 2000 on what the mill rates are. So my proposed budget, right here, is asking for a mill rate of 30.34,000. That's an increase over the current, which is 29.15. And you kind of see, this graph kind of shows you the different years of rebalance as well. And right here is the, oops, sorry about that, is the change in from one rebalance to the next. You have the state and state, here's the next rebalance, here in 2013, it took effect. And we're going to be 2016, 17, 2016 is the next one, so this will be adjusted again. So we'll have to use resets every five years. I always like to do a little bit comparison with our fellow towns in Connecticut. And right here in the middle is Enfield, what the proposed rate is. And if there's an asterisk next to the town, that means that's a proposed. The rest are all actually fiscal year 2015 numbers, because I can find what their proposals are to those right off the top of my head. So you can see that we're really right in the middle. The towns that are above the Town of Enfield are towns that offer similar type services and the variety and scope of services. Where the towns generally beneath Enfield are those that offer fewer type services like the Town of Enfield. And as you can see, that again, we're in the lower end of the full-service communities and at the upper end of those communities that aren't full service. And finally, the last slide, talk about our unassigned fund balance. This is a very important graph to keep in mind. We have a unwritten policy that we try to keep somewhere between 9 and 12 percent of the fund balance that is unassigned in the general fund, unassigned, which means it's there. And if we need it, we can use it. Coming out of the recession, if we're actually out of the recession, in 2012, you kind of see where we are back to the lowest point for us. But this year, at the end of 2014, we're starting to see, you know, the peak where we kind of want to be long-term, a little bit higher cost as well. And this is very important, and I know councils are fully aware of this, is when we start talking about the debt we're going to be issuing over the next few years for the roads project, for the school project, the credit rating agencies, which we're right now talking to for the next issuance, like to see a good fund balance. And this is a very strong cash and financial position for the Town of Enfield, which will hopefully keep our credit rating the same as what it is, which is a very strong position for us, and which means lower interest rates, which means savings over 20 years of a lot of money. And so right now, we're going to be peaking a little bit over 16 million, right around 16 million in unassigned fund balance. The projection is just looking at what the current revenue or what was budgeted for revenue, what was budgeted for expenditures, and what was budgeted for the use of fund balance to balance those two out for the current year, which is 700,000. If we spent all that money, you know, we'd be down a little bit into the 15 million dollar rate. So again, a very strong position for us, something we watch on a constant basis and try to keep up there. Just to make people aware, you can find all the documents that were presented to council, my budget presentation, the department presentations, this presentation as well, can all be found on our website. There is a budget page over there, you go there, you can find all this information. And with that, I'll go over to the other.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Matt, thanks for the presentation. So we'll look to the community conversation portion. So, and Lori Young-Geyer, who just arrived, she can enter the floor. But Lori, you're free to come on up to the front if you so wish, or you can stay if that's, it's entirely up to you.
Yeah.
Ray, watch something.
Come on.
What's that?
You're so high up there.
I thought it was coming.
You're so very high.
Because we're, we're a big boy, big boys.
All right, folks from the community, just raise your hand, I'll call on you and come on up again to the podium. There is no time limit. We ask you to come on up. State your name and address for the record. Got a particular question? Feel free to state the question, direct the question to either council board or staff members in the audience.
Will do.
Welcome, Jen.
Thanks. Jennifer Moncus, 17, Booth Road. And my question is, the intergovernmental income of roughly 34 million dollars that comes from mostly the state, as I understand, is that funding directly related to education or is that funding that can be more, that is more broadly than that?
Yeah.
Or use this one, it's really good. It doesn't have the buzz that that one does.
Yeah, they're all very, very, very great ones. So out of that 34 odd million dollars, about 29 million plus goes to school. So that money is passed right on to the board of education. And so there's about 3 plus million dollars that is the state reimbursement to town for pilot, you know, payments in lieu of taxes for where, you know, state property is. Our share of casino money that comes in, and a number of miscellaneous other type of grants we get.
But the majority of it is directed toward education?
Vast majority of it, yeah.
So here's my question. If the state has a rescission and doesn't, as there is some fear perhaps, not expectation, but fear that there may be, would the town, I mean, would the town have to defer that difference or is that a much bigger conversation?
Do you want me to take that one? Well, that becomes a political, fellow council members can weigh in. So the way I understand it is if funding from the state remains flat, there typically is a legislation passed by the legislature every year called minimum budget requirement. And that typically gets tucked into the budget bill, and it states municipalities who receive state aid and pass it on to the schools needs to give no less than what was given in the past. Now, for years, we haven't seen a reduction in state aid to education. So it only impacts on the education side. So what would have to be a decision by the council is if they reduce, and just say offhand they reduce that by a million dollars. So instead of 29, they pass on 28. And the state would probably then not pass that minimum budget requirement component in their bill because they've reduced aid. So then the council could be free to reduce by a million in that hypothetical scenario. So we have to wait and see, and we probably won't know prior to that.
Right, that's my understanding.
So, you know, we're going to be adopting the budget mid-May, and chances are the state won't know, so we'll have to work off of what we currently know and anticipate today.
Okay.
State has been very consistent in at least level funding, state aid to municipalities. That's what the governor's budget is today. Anything different would just be a guess.
Okay. So what I've heard from some of our, one or two of our state legislators and in other work that I do is that we probably won't have a state budget between, before, closer to the end of June. So we'll have our town budget in effect, or adopted, by the middle of May. So if there were changes to what we expect from the state, would we have to go kind of revisit? I'm just not familiar with what that process is.
I don't think we can, correct, Matt?
Well, it, the answer is it depends. I would say it was about three or four years ago, the state actually didn't adopt the budget until, it was after July, I think it was August. And they had written into the legislation, adopted it, the ability for towns to go back. The reality, though, is that if it's not passed by June, mid-June latest, you know, we're already starting to prepare the tax bills for July 1st.
Right.
And so if it's passed after July 1st, it's going to be very difficult for council to go back and say, okay, now we have to raise taxes. They could do that, could be a supplemental increase, but that's a lot, a lot, and a lot. And so I would assume that, you know, we're going to have to look at how to reduce the budget to do that. And again, I think council, not speaking for any member of council, but I think, you know, they would, they would try not to negatively impact operational budgets. You know, there is a sizable amount of capital that, under the mayor's scenario, that we probably, I would recommend we look at first. But again, that's assuming it's a million dollar hit. You know, a potential scenario is, could be a lot greater than that because the Town of Enfield is one of the municipalities that receives a lot of state aid. You know, a 10 percent hit to the Town of Enfield is 3.3 million dollars, where some towns, that's like, you know, 300,000 dollars. So it's, all bets are off if they do that.
Wait and see. Well, thank you very much. You've answered my question.
Thank you, Jennifer, appreciate it. Tom.
I have a couple of questions. One that I just thought of is.
Hey, Tom, can you just, for the record?
Oh, Tom Walsh, Roseanne Street.
Thank you, Tom.
When we had the charter open, why didn't we move when we approved our budget to later on, to when we know that the, that the state would have a budget? Why, why wasn't something like that done, you know, so that maybe we approve our budget in August?
Well, I was, you were part, you want to take it? So, and anyone else, please, Phil? I was the, one of the council liaisons to charter revision. And I know they looked at everything, but our fiscal year begins July 1st. And so really, the schedule that we have today is really tight to even a July 1 fiscal year. Now, conceptually, maybe you could change our fiscal year to January 1. I don't know if we could. But it was already tight window, you know, just to the point of preparing tax bills and getting over first. And so the decision was to leave it the same.
But it leaves us in this quagmire constantly. We don't know what the state's going to give us, and, and.
Maybe state statute needs to change. I know there's a lot of people calling on the legislature to say, hey, look, you need not fair to municipalities that have a July 1. It's not fair to the state either. And everyone's up to the wire. It may require state legislation to actually change.
I think that really definitely needs to be looked into because I hear this every year. Well, we're going to pass our budget, but we don't know what the state's going to give us. And, and let's face it, our state, you know, that's not where I was going, but. And as far as, as far as the school system, I don't, don't misunderstand me, I'm not anti-school system, and I don't want to, you know, be the gray-haired guy that brings this up. But if we're being flat-funded by the state, why, why aren't we flat-funding the school? I mean, if, if the state can't afford to give us more money, then how can you expect us to give you more money? I mean, I, that's just my, my look at it. It's not, it's not that I don't want to pay, but this, the way we pay in this town, or we pay in this whole, whole state, it's, it's an unfair system. Okay? If you got a house that's appraised or assessed at 78,000, and, you know, you pay whatever, less than three grand in taxes, and then you got people in this town, I mean, I'm lucky, I'm kind of in the middle. I pay 4,500 dollars a year for taxes. I don't really use any services, except for the garbage. But I know people that pay over 10,000 dollars a year for taxes. So this, everybody's screaming, oh, we need to give more money, we need to give more money. But this tax increase is different on everybody in this town. You know, for one person, it's 50 bucks, for another person, it's 400 or 500. So, I mean, and the other thing is, is the state, I mean, the town is merging the two high schools. Okay? And supposedly, we're supposed to spend, save all kinds of money. And supposedly, we're supposed to spend, save all kinds of money with this. We're going to be moving, we won't need as many teachers, because, you know, you're going to have kids merging together and everything, supposedly, I don't know. But why don't we wait till then before we keep up in the budget? I mean, we paid administrators a lot of money. Give them what you give them, and let them figure it out, you know? And then there was another thing, I read in the paper, I don't know how true this is, but I saw you were going to go up 800 grand or something on the social services for mental health. They took that away from my own health insurance a few years back, and now I'm going to pay for other people to have it in my taxes. And then I saw something about parenting classes. Are you guys kidding me? We're going to teach parenting classes now? With our tax dollars? I mean, I, I kind of got a thing, I got a problem with that. Because again, you know, I, I'm 62 years old, I'm going to retire in four years. I was hoping to retire now, but it's not going to work out. And in four years, the taxes are going to be worse. I never planned on still being here. When my kids grew up, I was heading south, but I got all kinds of grandkids in this town and another town, a couple of other towns. And so, I'm stuck here, because my wife ain't leaving. All right? So, now, I got to look, I got to watch out for, not only like, I, I think about the older people in this town that are on fixed income, you know? Every time you, you know, the taxes went up the last four years, plus the sewer bills. You know, some people, they don't get that extra money, so they got to do without something. So, if we got to do without something, then the school system needs to do it, maybe the town needs to do without something. You know, I, I just, I think you guys really need to keep that in mind when you, when you pass this budget, you know? It's, like I said, the tax increase on one person's not the same on another, you know? And, and again, parenting classes? I may not have been the best parent, but nobody taught me how to be a parent. And I really got a problem with paying somebody else that probably shouldn't have kids to teach them parenting classes. But anyways, like I said, keep in mind, you got a lot of people in this town that are older, and this is going to put a hurting on them.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone want to address any of his comments? Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Anyone else? Yes, come on up. Oh, go ahead, Donna. Yeah, but come on up.
Hi, Tom.
Hi.
You know, Tom, we're probably in the same situation, you know? You, you come to this town, and you grow down roots, and now you're not going to move, and you're trying to find the best way. And I know I sit here, and I sat on Board of Ed, and I found the most frustrating thing was every year that all municipal and public employees get a 2% raise. And when we give those raises, they're, they're pushed by the unions, they're pushed by everybody else, they say it's a cost of living adjustment, but the rest of people don't necessarily get that 2%. And I think over and over again, I see this, and the frustration is, is you don't want to take the programs away that make this town what people come here to live for. But yet, we're caught in the crossfire of how to keep everything, you know, stable. So, I think the thing is, is to try to be patient with us, and maybe, you know, look for ways that we can save money without cutting programs, because every year, we have a 2% raise that has to go to all our employees. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. Sure, Tom, you can do a follow-up.
Go right ahead, no.
No, I, I understand, everybody gets a 2% raise, but, I mean, in, in where I work, we had a guy, a man pass away. I got some of his work. So, you know, in the real world, or in, in the outside world of, other than, than union education and the town, you know, when we went to school here, I don't remember what my class size was, especially in high school, it was kind of, don't remember much of it. But in grade school, our classes were high, our, our class sizes were high. I went to Kishu School, and it was plastic hanging in the hallway, and we went to double, the double classes. So, I mean, if they want more money, that's fine, more work. You know, do we need all kinds of department chairs that don't need to teach classes? I mean, I don't know. I don't know how the school system works, I just hear bits and pieces from what I hear from other people. You know, I know some people are pro-this, and some people are pro-that, so I don't know what to believe on, on the other end, but I hear we have department chairs that don't teach classes. Do we need them? I mean, we're, do we need, do we need people to teach teachers how to teach? I heard we have, we have that kind of thing that goes on too. They went to college. Should have learned there. You know, I, I mean, again, I'm not anti-education, but again, you, you can't just keep raising taxes. This system doesn't work. All right? This whole thing is going to, is going to crash sooner or later, because you can't keep raising taxes on people. And everybody says, well, if you don't like it, move, family will move it. You can't afford for me to move. Because if I sell my house, and I put the walls back up, and right now, it's a one-and-a-half bedroom house, but I put the walls back in place, it's four bedrooms. You can have a family of four, five, six kids in there. It's cheaper to have me here. So, you should probably keep that in mind, and a lot of other people with gray hair, it's cheaper to have us here. And, and, and to keep that, you just have to keep that in mind, because, you know, if, once, once we retire, I mean, I, I'm going to be living on social security. Between, between my, I, we've, we're, not, not to keep going on, but just between my taxes now and what my car and homeowner's insurance is, I'm at, I'm at about nine, eight, almost eight grand, right off the top. That's before heat, electricity, food, you know? And that's another thing to keep in mind. I'm sure there's a lot of people in this town retired a long time ago, that these tax increases take food off the table. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Good evening. Bethany Olet, 24 Betty Road. Okay, I believe you had broken out, the budget for the town was 59 million plus, and the Board of Ed was 65.8. What portion of that 65.8 is town money? Because that's pretty much their entire budget, and we know the state's giving a good portion of that. So, what portion of it is actually town taxpayer money?
It would be the 65.8 minus the 29.
So, that wouldn't include any grants that's in the Board of Ed right now, as far as their breakdown of grants?
No.
That's not in there. So, it would be just the 29 for the state would be minus out, and that would be the actual town responsibility, not 65. Okay. And so, that number plus your 59.4, is that where you base your mill rate calculation
The way, the way that you calculate the mill rate, at least from my perspective, is you see what your expenditures are, you minus out the non-tax revenues. So, you know, the state aid, and fees, and permits, and all that, what's left is then the levy that you have to establish to pay for the rest of the services.
Okay. And as far as, if the Board of Ed does not approve the guards, where does that money go in the budget?
The money's on the town side of the budget, and that would be a council decision at the time of adopting the budget.
Okay. And I don't know if the Board of Ed members can answer this question, as far as we saw increases for the town in healthcare and in pensions, are we seeing the same type of increases for the Board of Ed to maybe explain why we need this money?
That's why I brought the budget book. I can find it. The answer to your question is yes. We did take a hit on, on healthcare and on workers' comp, but I can find it, bear with me a minute, and I'll tell you the difference.
Short answer is yes.
The answer is yes, we took a hit. And I just don't know where the heck I put it.
And while you're looking, of the 205,000 for school improvements, is that spread amongst all the public schools? Is any of that going to the parochial schools? Okay.
No.
Okay.
Okay, Bethany, have your answer.
Okay.
On healthcare, we originally had a, almost a 1 million, 1.2 million dollar increase over the, from last year. By work, reworking the numbers with the insurance people, we actually ended up only coming up maybe a few hundred thousand dollars. So, we managed that. On workers' comp, we ended up having almost a million-dollar difference, and again, working with the town, we brought that down. That money's already been reduced down into the budget proposal.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Bethany. Anyone else?
Hi, Tricia Wright, 66 Oakwood Street, and I don't have a question, I just have a blanket statement that, while I appreciate that the Board of Ed's budget has a big old bullseye on it, I'm hoping that when you all sit down and look at the budget, that it's looked at evenly. That's all I'm asking, and that it's just a fair cuts, if you will, across the board, and not just Board of Ed. Thank you.
Thanks, Tricia.
Need my name and address again?
Yes, please.
I'm still Jennifer Moncous at 17 Booth Road. And this is really more a question for the Board of Ed, I think. So, if you guys know the answer, that'd be great. But am I correct in my understanding that if the Board of Ed was flat-funded at the same dollars that they had gotten last year, that that would in effect mean that programs and things had to be cut because there are increases in costs?
Well, first of all, we're not flat-funded this year.
No, no.
We have an increase of 1.6 mil on the table right now from the town manager. So, that's where that's at. Right now, we're going through the budget, still working on it, to see what else we can take that's non-program effective, so should not affect programs and staff and class sizes. We're not done yet, we still have a ways to go. Is that answer your question?
Well, I think my question was really more for sort of public edification, if you will, that if, if we, if, if the town of Enfield appropriated the same amount of money to report it to education as it appropriated last year, that that would in effect be a decrease in what they would have available to spend because of increased expenses.
That is true.
Okay.
But they're not doing it.
Right. And then also, I really miss the leaf service. Just wanted to put that out there.
That's on you.
Just want to, really miss that one. Thank you.
Jennifer, I agree. I love just raking them out to the curb. I, I live with it. And I think when it was eliminated, it saved about 200,000 dollars a year. That was a budget reduction. And a safety and a avoidance of a mess and all that, that happened all over the place. Anyone else? For the first time or the second time? Very good. Thank you very much. May I have a motion to adjourn by Deputy Mayor Lee, seconded by Councilor Denny? All those in favor? Those opposed, we are adjourned. Have a good...